Ready to start, Cassie?
Good afternoon. I am Steve Mason. I have the pleasure of chairing the Citizens Bond Oversight Advisory Board. Thanks for joining us today. I'm calling them in order. Cassie, let's see if we have a quorum.
Go ahead, David.
Start all over again. My mother named me Joanne and my husband married me. I'm Davis. I'm here.
Mike Myers, present.
Steve Mason, present.
Heather Gardner, present.
Have you ever made a presence?
Thank you, guys, for being here. Notice this meeting was properly posted October 20th, 2025. For purposes of this agenda, action means any of the following: amending, approving, approving is amended, deferring, denying, giving instructions to staff, making a recommendation to another public body, receiving documents or presentations, referring to committee, reconsidering, re- open, returning, or striking the item. Agenda item one is approval of amendments from August 19th, 2025. So are there thoughts, questions, or motion?
Move. So moved.
Second, is there any discussion from the committee? Any input from the public? If no, let's vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Under recurring items, number two, discussion impossible. Action regarding the planning, design, management, construction of the new Oklahoma County Adult Detention Center and Behavioral Care Center. Stacy?
Good afternoon. I'm gonna go through a few things with you on this item and maybe answer some questions. One of the things I get asked the most is how is this different this time than last time? And I like to try to answer that. I wasn't around last time when we built the jail down the street. I'd have had the privilege of knowing a couple of people who were, and I got to interview them. And then I have read the grand jury report on it, so we do not want to repeat that. So the few things that are different is, on the behavioral care anyway, we're fully funded. That's very important to have enough money to actually build the project. What happened last time down there is they got like one penny for one year. And that's all the money you get. You make it fit. Well, that amount of money never had any relationship to what that project cost. So they had to cut so many corners, leaving steel and everything else out, that we've had a 35-year disaster, basically. So you don't want to repeat that. We didn't repeat that on the behavioral care. Now, when spring comes, we've got to get enough money to finish the jail. And not just some set amount of money and make it fit. You get what it costs. It's critical infrastructure. You can't leave things out. There's two types of infrastructure projects. When we did my office down the hall, we left out the crown molding. We didn't paint a CMU wall. It's just there. You don't, and my office functions fine without that stuff. But you do not leave pieces out of a jail. You have to build everything. So it's critical when you're talking to people about that upcoming tax is it's got to be structured in a way that you get what you have to have to build it, and then you get what you have to have to maintain it. So that's something to be thinking about for when the spring gets here. Another thing that I like to point out is the number of people that are actually involved in watching this project on a weekly, if not daily, basis. Flinkco has eight people that are fully assigned to this and onsite every day. HOK has five. My office has one, and then I'm there a weekly. Our owner's rep has eight people there onsite. Our testing company has five. And then the seven of you are providing some oversight on this project on a certain cycle. So I just named 35 people that are watching this project on a weekly, if not daily, basis. And the best I can figure, the last time, 35 years ago, there might have been two or three at the most. So that is extremely different than what was done last time. And just for transparency sake, right now, we're tracking 48 failed tests on our behavioral care center. Most of it's concrete masonry. And all of that work has been torn out and replaced, or it's in the process over the next 10 days of getting torn out and replaced. And the problem is getting solved. I can tell you that the original masonry contractor is no longer there. He's been replaced. And things like that. So this job's gonna be built correctly.
And Stacy, when you say that's all been torn out and is being replaced, I assume that's not at the county's expense?
That's correct. Not at my expense.
Stacy, can I ask you a question? We talked about Flinkco and HOK. Flinkco had eight and HOK five? Or are we talking management?
Some of them are. They start with a project manager, and then there's a couple of job superintendents. And then there's some folks doing administrative work with change orders and finances and working with subcontractors. So it's a variety of personnel.
But mostly not, you're not counting your workers, the total number of workers on site?
No, no, there's dozens and dozens of workers. A lot of those are subcontractors.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? With replacing the masonry contractor, is that an increase in cost? Or were they able to do it for the same amount as the previous bidder?
I couldn't tell you, but it's not costing us anything. So to our cost center up here, we're tracking our costs with our architect and geotech and Flinkco's fees and our testing labs and so forth. And the interest that the count's earning, we just sold the bonds again. We'd sold 45 million to get started. Now we've sold the additional 215 million from the 22 vote. Went very successfully. Bank of America out of New York bought those at 3.6%. So hugely successful sale. And the sheet there says they will have 215 million for that phase one of the jail construction. It's actually about 213. There's one expense I didn't get on here that we just recently added, and that was our owner's rep fee. Mr. Bill White, Bill White and Associates, that was recently added. He's working on behavioral care, but now he's been added to the jail itself, which is a nice addition. And we really needed that to get us off to a good start. Then the ARPA project of being the behavioral care center, we're about $8 million into that expense-wise, which is about 20% of the project. Maybe just a slight bit behind schedule, but we got a recovery schedule working to get them caught back up. Is there any other questions about the expenses?
So Stacy, I'm less experienced with some of these people about failing tests. What fails on concrete or masonry?
The strength. When you break the cylinders.
And what failed on the masonry?
The cement.
The grout, the mortar. Both of them are subject to tests for compression, number of other factors, the runniness of the mix, et cetera.
I would think a cement truck's a cement truck, and it's all the same.
No.
Yeah, the mix will be to a certain specification. So in a failed test, doesn't mean it was poor product necessarily, or like the bad product. But it could mean that it didn't meet the specifications that were required for the type of use. So it could be bad formulation, could have been bad weather that day, that sort of, or bad timing in how long it took the cement truck to get to the site. I mean, there are a range of factors. But also, it feels like in this instance, they recognize some things that weren't, that the subcontractors maybe weren't doing that they should have and rectified that as well.
Little water happy sometimes.
I have a couple of questions. So was any of that impacted by the remediation that's needed for the soil?
No, the soil remediation is to let you know that has completely been cleaned up, hauled off to the landfill, and we are almost completely backfill the area. The total cost of that's gonna be somewhere around a half a million dollars. We did have to change order into our project, but that's been turned over to the district attorney now to try to recover those funds for us. And we know all the people that's been out there through the years that are probably responsible for that site.
The other question was, you mentioned some change orders, but so I wanted to know how it's tracking? Or did it bid on budget? How are we doing with the budget for that behavioral?
I'll get to that on my next sheet. People bear with me. The last thing I'll say is having the CMAR method instead of the low bid method has helped us a lot in this project. Things. Yeah, put something in the kitty, man. They're able to find things, Scott wants you on it, through that process because you got your contractor working with your designer side by side. And there are issues that we don't have to deal with. They couldn't even tell you what they are, or what got flushed out before we broke ground. But had we not had this method, we would be dealing with a lot more problems, in my opinion, than we are. So wherever we are in this project, wherever we end up, we're gonna be better off than where we would have been. Scott's got a little document to show you if he can get in there. Messed up the computer. Just not gonna let him in. All right, I'll put my next sheet back up there and we'll move on. Okay, Heather, this gets back to your question. The very top line up there, the original contract, as we approved it, 44 million, $400,000, the GMP for the behavioral care center. Neither party was happy with that number, so that tells me it was a successful negotiation. You can see where they started, where the contractor started at 47.5 and where we ended up. Within that 44.4 was supposed to be a 10% contingency, or about $4 million. So from the day we negotiated that number, it was about four months until the final subcontractor bid came in under Title 61, and there was zero, well, not zeros, $59,000 in contingency left. So almost $4 million was eaten up by escalation costs in a four-month period. So people often wonder, is that escalation real? Well, here's a real live example. It's absolutely real. Where I know those subs were on speed dial with Flinkco when they were, when we were negotiating this, and they were given prices that they would hold. Three, four months later, they didn't hold. Escalation ate it up. So that put us in a kind of a, not us, but it put Flinkco in a pretty tough position. Just only have 59,000 in contingency. We did go through a value analysis of the whole project, all the entire team. We're not gonna cut any corners, remember, but if we could find a product that was an equivalent product that would not hurt the quality of the project, we'd do some substitution, and we were able to do that. We found about $267,000 that we could add back into the contingency. That's about, well, halfway down the sheet, says BE summary. And that's still not enough money on a $44 million project, but it's better than where we were. And then we're so far tracking 235 RFIs, requests for information on this project. They don't all result in change orders, but that's an awful lot of RFIs. But we're tracking 20 change orders out of the 235. Some are approved, some are denied, some are pending. So the GMP, as I stand here today, is 45 million, 246,909. And I will tell you that now that we're up and out of the ground, if you go out there, you'll see those steels up in the air. That's a good sign. I'll be very disappointed if this project ends up back at that original number on the top left. I think we'll.
Do you know when we're scheduled to top out on the structure?
I don't have that in front of me.
I really don't.
Any questions about changes? Can you put my next slide up there, Cassie? Yeah, there. That's your first phase of the actual jail itself. On the left is where we have, it's in the red, it's where we have our intake and our booking and our release area. And it goes on over to the right, where we have laundry, warehouse, kitchen, and a minimum security pod is on the far right. And then as you go north, that's where the cup is built, where all the utilities originate from. And I gave you a handout of how we're gonna get the utilities in this first phase from the cup to the intake. It's a utility trestle. It's probably gonna add about 2 and 1/2 million dollars to the cost of the project on an interim basis. Now, if you were successful in passing that tax in April, I wouldn't have to build that. I could eliminate that and put the utilities back where they were gonna go. So being successful that first time around is, would be very helpful, you know, to the overall budget. But if we get stuck.
So acquisition of this trestle can wait until after that?
Yeah, I've been talking, working with Flinkco, we can see how that first tax in April works out before we actually have to build that trestle.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be real close, but I mean.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
No, that's a fair question. Okay. And then the bed count, as I stand here today, I think we're, there's 425 beds between intake, transportation, and that minimum security on the far right. I don't know if we'll hold all those beds, but that's what we're shooting for, you know, as we go through the budget. The minimum security pod, those folks would be able to work the laundry in the kitchen. Be very helpful for them to be out there. And that's really about how much minimum security we're running down here now. So you might not have any minimum security downtown in this interim phase, if it works out the way I think it will. You ready to try that again?
So, yeah, I had a question, kind of this reminded me about your previous statements on the behavioral care center. So what's the difference between the 44 and the 47 number right now? So it's 47, I mean, what were we tracking on, like, what's budgeted, like, dollars in place?
The contract is 44 million, 400,000. That's an encumbered solid contract. With the change orders we've approved, we're at 45 million and some change. And I don't know where the project's gonna end up, and I said I'd be disappointed if it got back to the 47.
So does that, so does that mean that there's 1. something million dollars to come up with? That is not, that's unaccounted for?
No, we had some extra money that we could change order in. We actually have a pretty good pot of money left, but that is really for the FFNE.
Okay.
The equipment that we have to buy, trying to get an operator on board to help us pick that equipment and so forth. So I'm hoping the equipment will come in a little lower than that, and I'll have a little extra money.
So just, and I'm trying to get it clear in my head, not trying to give you a hard time. Is, so are we functionally kind of taken from the FFNE in lieu of actually having contingency?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
I've got both. I've got two buckets left.
Okay.
I can't tell you how much is in one of my buckets because I don't want the contractor to know.
Okay, fair enough. All right. That, I think you answered the question.
It's basically an owner's contingency that you're controlling, not part of the construction contract.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that being honorary, Javier?
No, sir, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I mean, you answered the question without answering the question, but that's the loop I was trying to close.
So here's one of the values, I think, of having a CMR program, where the contractor and the designer are working together side by side. The contractor's actually able to take those plans as we go before we ever break ground and build it on paper, on the computer, before you ever break ground in the field. And that finds and solves a lot of problems before you ever get there. And this is actually Flinkco's model that they put together, and they let us borrow it so that we can see what's going on ourselves. And Scott's giving you a little tutorial of it. He's tilting it up so you can see underneath the building where all the utilities are, if you want to see utilities. They're in there, the different colors are different type of utility. We have a lot of fun with things like this. Can you zoom in down the hall, Scott, and just show them a room? So you could look at something like that for hours, look at specific things you want to find inside that building and get your head wrapped around it before you ever go out to the project site. And take any of you to the site anytime you want to go, just let me know.
And I'm gonna, he's told me their construction meetings are every Tuesday at 1:30. And I'm gonna try to attend a couple to hear what they're talking about. We're all welcome.
They're very productive. I would recommend it.
2 o'clock. My bad. They're 2 on Tuesdays. If you've got any questions to Bill, that was a good time to hit him. Let's go on to the next, if there's any more questions, we'll answer them for the next time. Let's go on to the next, if there's any more questions, we'll answer them if we're on the next item.
So we're done with item three?
I think that's all I had to present to you today.
So recurring items, item two, financial tracking. Do we have any questions for Stacy or Bill from the committee or the public? If not, we'll go to departmental items. Item three, discussion and possible action to receive an update regarding the RFP for Behavioral Care Operator Services and Determining Board Involved Recommendations. Stacy?
Yeah, we received three responses to RFP. Cope Incorporated, Cree Oaks, and First Class Healthcare. We're going to interview those three companies next month. The board accounting commissioners set a committee up. Everybody on that committee, I think, is a mental health professional. So they're, they know what they're doing, and we should get a, a good recommendation from that board. And then just see where that ends up. You guys have been tracking that on your agenda, and it will affect operations costs. So that's kind of in your, your area. And I know some of you volunteered to be on that committee, but they ended up going a different route, the commissioners did. So probably won't see that on here anymore, but I just wanted to close it out and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Stacy from the committee or the public? If not, we'll go to item four. Item four is discussion and possible action regarding new jail bonds, ponds, and potential spending options and recommendations.
All right, I think we've already seen the site plan. The number for that phase, this one's still showing the, was it? I can't. It's still showing basically the hundred-and-seventy-five, but we've added the two and a half million for the utility trestle. I know that's going to be added to that, if it hasn't already been. We're still seeing escalation, inflation costs out there. So we're going to try to negotiate the, the GMP on this, probably between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Bill and I were talking about it earlier. I think it'd be in the one-eighty range for that phase of the project. And that's where I'm hoping we, we are. Are there any questions about that? And then there's the operational narrative. I think you've seen this once before, but that's how the process will work. When someone's arrested, they'll start at the new intake center. They'll get evaluated to see where they go, whether they stayed there for minimum security, whether they go to the behavioral care, whether they're transported back downtown. And I told you, we had about four-hundred-and-twenty-five beds right now at the new facility in various places. And I think that's all I had on that one, Steve.
Questions from the committee or the public? Now, we're done with item four. Item five is discussion and possible action regarding the dates and times of the 2026 regularly scheduled meetings for the Citizens Fund Oversight Advisory Board. Thoughts? What do we need here, Stacy or Cassie?
Yes, I will need a motion and a second and approval.
Move to approve.
Schedule list presented.
Any discussion from the committee or the public? If not, can we vote, please?
Cassie, I had one question on this. The committee had asked one time if we could actually have a meeting onsite. And I think if we were going to do that, you would have to actually put it, the location in here, because you can't change it after the fact, or how's that work?
We can call a special and choose the location at that time.
On the special meeting, okay. Because when that thing gets built, where it's a little further along, where maybe it's closed in so that it's, you know, warm enough or cool enough, I think it'd be kind of nice to have a meeting actually at the facility.
Yes.
Next year.
You all can call those as specials if you would like, and we can choose the location and date and time at that time.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, can we vote, please?
Thank you.
We're now to citizen participation. Citizens may address the board during open meetings under the agenda items of participation. However, the board cannot discuss, take action, or make any decisions on matters not on the current agenda. Please fill out a request form. Would anyone like to provide any input? Okay, board comments. I'm going with the chamber to Nashville tomorrow. I get to visit the Davidson facility, Davidson County, which is a brand-new, excellent facility. Any other board comments? Any new business? We have a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion from the committee or the public? We can vote, please. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.